Hope you all already know that this meeting is recorded and we can see the flag in this location and will all rise to the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country at this time. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people who live here. One nation, thy守护神, indivi- with liberty and justice for all. Well, I want to thank you for coming. We have complete attendance. All the trustees are here either in person or on Zoom. And at this time, our agenda calls for us to go into executive session, which means that the attending will consist of the director and the trustees. So I want to thank everyone else for coming at this time. I would estimate a half hour break. Give a take?
Possibly, yeah.
Thirty minutes. Just give it thirty minutes to make it easy.
Okay.
And I can shoot you both a quick email when we're finished.
Perfect. Thank you.
If you want. Molly, did you want to stay on or did you want to go? It's union contract.
It's totally up to you, Karen. Whatever works for you.
I can't hear you. I can't hear anything.
Where's your phone?
It's then we'll get the echo.
Is it helpful for me now?
If you've got your volume up, I don't think I can put mine up. Now I'm on, now I'm on, I'm the one that's not muted. Alright, I'm gonna try it. Alright, I've got my speaker on and I'm unmuted.
Who's in your, who's in your office? What board members are there in person?
Amanda, Matt, and Cecilia. And Dennis, I'm going to ask you to pop off while we're in executive session and then I can send you an email when it's time to come back on.
Okay, fine.
Remind me to send the email, please.
Did you want us there in person? When I got the Zoom link, I assumed that that's what you wanted us to do.
We are doing it a Zoom meeting, but people can come and join in the office if it's easier for them.
Oh, okay.
Dennis, are you able to go off of the, to leave the meeting? I'm going to ask you to leave the meeting and then come back when I send you an email because the board needs to go into executive session now.
Okay.
Thank you. That is nothing worse. I'll remind him of that later. Craig, can I turn it over to you?
Sure. It's nice to see everybody.
Craig, you must love this Zoom world.
I do. It is much more efficient for them, yet to not waste a lot of time in traffic, which is a very good thing. So thanks, thanks for taking the time. Karen and I have been hard at work with our union negotiations. We've had numerous sessions with them and we are down to the bitter end. So we have resolved virtually every issue that we've proposed and talked about between both our proposals and their proposals. There are a few little open items, but for the most part, we're mostly done. And we're down to the two big items, which are money and health contribution, which is a form of money. So what we're hoping Karen and I to accomplish tonight is to get a sense from the board as to what your authorization is with regard to the money aspects of the, of the package. Karen, have you, what if anything does the board have that you've given them document wise?
I have not given them the calculations. We just have, you and I have the calculations about what the costs are.
Okay, so as you'll remember from our last meeting together, we have been talking about a three-year contract. We're already halfway through the first of those three years. And we currently have on the table a proposal that was within your authorization from last time, which is we've proposed 1% increases to the salary schedules. As you'll remember, you have a step schedule. So under the law, individuals who are not already at top step are entitled to move to the next highest step at the end of each contract year. The cost of that step movement is approximately $17,000 each year. During the life of this contract, it doesn't look like you will have very many additional employees get to top step. So that step cost should remain relatively consistent over the life of the contract. So you can figure that's a built-in $17,000 each year above what you paid the prior year. 1% applied to those salary schedules is approximately $14,000. So the total for 1% plus step is the way we call it, is $31,000 to the additional to your budget. The union presently has proposed 2 and 1/2% plus step. We think that, you know, if you try to split the difference between where they are and where we are, we're hoping that consistent with what we discussed as a group among, with you last time, that we can hopefully achieve a settlement somewhere in the 1.75% range, 1 and 1/2, 175, 2. Most of the settlements are seeming to come in around 2%, 2 and 1/4. You're even starting to see things creep up closer to 3 as you look at both municipal settlements and school district settlements and the like. So we're looking for-
I'm sorry, Craig, could you repeat that again? What have most of them been?
They're, they're ranging, they're usually around 2, 2 and 1/4, Alice. For example, we just settled, I don't have it in front of me, we just settled in the town with the CSEA and it was in the 2s range. I just, I've done some other settlements that all seem to be coming in right around that, that area. So-
And what is health insurance contribution?
So the health insurance contribution in most places, that's a significant part of any package. As Alice, you probably dealt with it when it would the school boards, health contribution is significant.
As to health and Shanti.
It's different for your library because you only have, what is it, Karen? 11 employees who get health insurance because you only provide it to your full-time employees. So an increase of, you know, 1% contribution is $300. So, you know, you're not, you're not looking at a lot of savings by, and you're affecting such a small number of unit members that it has very little impact. We would like to see the contribution go up by anywhere from a half a percent each year of the contract to maybe 1%. It really depends on what you're going to give them in terms of salary increases because obviously they look at any increase of the contribution as just taking away from whatever money you've given them in, in raises. So I do think we'll be able to achieve some increase in the health contribution during the life of the contract, but it's really going to be driven by what we're going to be willing to do in terms of the percentage increase.
Where are most other libraries in terms of their contributions?
Karen, you would know that more.
They, they are all over the map.
All over the map is the way I would describe it.
There's some libraries that have no contribution. There are some libraries who require 50, like the MAX, which is 50% of the individual and 65% of the family, and then everything in between.
And as you know, for retiree coverage, you have the maximum that's allowable by law.
For future retirees.
Right.
I will say that the $17,000 debt for the step movement for the current year has been, is included in this year's budget. So we did budget for the step movement already. Anything for this year would be in addition to that. I will say we have, we have some additional personnel expenses that we didn't anticipate, which is a higher than anticipated retirement payment. We had budgeted for a certain amount and it's coming in at about $14,000 more than we budgeted. However, we currently have two full-time unfilled positions, one of which that we're trying to fill and the other of which we will be working to fill in some way, shape, or form. So we are seeing some savings right now in this year's budget in our personnel line. So I'm not as concerned about this year's finances as I am budgeting for future years as we talk about this.
And Karen, you and I had also talked about, given the cash that you have on hand, about the possibility of possibly utilizing some of that, not for recurring costs, you know, in terms of a percentage increase that would continue to accrue, you know, forever, but to use some of that money that you have on hand in order to, at the very end, if we need it, to sweeten the, the deal to, to bring this to closure, maybe doing some one-time lump sum money.
Right. We've been fortunate over the last couple of years to have savings from our budget because of personnel savings. And so that's a possibility finance-wise. But it would be a one, I would only feel comfortable using that money if it was a one-time sort of thing, since it's not budgeted. How much of that money can be carried over into future years? Of the savings from previous years? There is no, there is no limit like there is with school districts. Our auditor has advised us that we should plan to spend down some of the money. We know we're going to need to for our HVAC projects, but he also did advise us that we want to be careful that we have enough for cash flow in our unallocated fund balance. We need to make sure that we maintain. So we don't want to draw it down too much, but we have been fortunate from several years of, of savings to have money available to us.
I will say that, you know, we spent a lot of time working on some management issues that were very important to Karen in terms of how she can run the library, specifically with regard to the clause in the contract that requires us to send people home if the temperature exceeds certain thresholds. And we got some real meaningful changes to those provisions that allow her to keep people in the, in areas of the library that are, you know, do not exceed, you know, are not too hot or too cold, which we all would agree are, you know, the thresholds are appropriate, but she will have a lot more flexibility in that regard. We'll also have a lot more flexibility about having people work from home in the event of disruptions. So, you know, sort of building on the COVID, one of the, one of the good things, if there's anything good that came out of it, of COVID is, you know, we've all learned how to work remotely.
So we're waiting for, instead of waiting for Dennis Johnson, so we can proceed to the floor of the Friday evening minutes, which is September 20th, 2021. Everyone should have received a copy of the minutes from the September meeting. If there are any questions or comments, we can-
Do you want me down?
Did you delete Jonathan?
No, I didn't. I deleted Jonathan.
Can you delete people from this? So we've now been joined by Dennis Newberger, the president of the Friends of the Library, as well as Leslie Allen, the chairperson of our foundation, and Jonathan Marshall, our WLS Board trustee representative. And Leslie, if you are prepared, we're up to the point of asking our public visitors for any comments. And if you're perhaps prepared or ready, we can go to you at this time.
Well, I don't have any comments because I've missed a couple of meetings and I apologize for that. I do have a couple of updates about the foundation. One is that we've lost a member and I do believe we're going to gain another member. So I will have more updates once all of that is official. The second little, I don't know if you guys know about the free little libraries, but we have delivered both a free little library and a post to the library. We're using these to be advocates for the Library Foundation. And so Karen now has both of those. And we have a second, sorry, we have a second location for the second one, and we have one more to place. So the second one, hopefully will be going down on Spring Street. And the third one, we have a couple of options and Karen and I are talking about it. I'm going to, one of them is Camp Woods and I'm, I'm going to go get over there and talk to them. So those are all little tiny ambassadors for the foundation and I'm excited about them. And, and Miriam has been doing little free libraries for a lot, Miriam Risco for a long time and she is, has a lot of energy towards this.
Leslie, could I just say that the school district has some data about where our most at-risk families are? So maybe we can, I can get that for you in terms of placement for these.
Okay. Thanks, Alice. We have, by the, by somebody that I'm hoping will join the board, I think she will, we have an introduction to a senior group at Star of Bethlehem to go talk to them at their noon luncheon. And I've made two phone calls and left two messages and we're still waiting to hear back. But I know Karen and I are both excited to get, talking to them and it'll happen. It's just they're a little bit hard to communicate with sometimes. We have a table at the Risco, the Mike Risco Music Store's Halloween Celebration, the day before Halloween. Mallory had some ideas about what we could do there, but we're going to be representing the library on that day, the foundation on that day, and hopefully just giving out tons of candy and getting really popular. So my son and I are going to be manning that and I believe Karen said there may be an opportunity for somebody else to come join us. Another thing that I hadn't seen in the last minutes is we are trying, Pam Thornton, who's on the foundation board and I, to join in on the start of a book club at Scarborough Manor, that we will, we will go to the initial meeting. It's their book club. We're not going to be dictating books. We're not going to be going to their meetings, but just to try and kind of softly sponsor a book club and, and introduce ourselves to that group, which I think is important. The, I forgot to say, the other possible little library site is Snowden Park. And somebody brought that to our attention and it may be that we need a fourth to get down there because I really, really want to see little libraries south, you know, west of Highland. That's where I really think that the foundation needs to do its work and, and get people involved. So as I said, Spring Street, Star Bethlehem, and if we could get Snowden Park. So we may have to get one more.
And across, across the street, when you go up towards Claremont and AMD, that's the other neighborhood.
So I, those, do those schools have their own libraries?
Oh, yes, of course they do.
Yeah.
Yes.
The other day, the other thing that just came up, Miriam Risco was trying to advertise us being at the Halloween festivities on the 30th. And she created a logo for us, which was very cute. It was a stack of books. And then Karen and Miriam had shared that we already have a logo. I, I mean, I looked at the logo and it's pretty benign and I'm not sure, I'm pretty sure that we could do a little better, but it would take some thinking. I think the foundation is a little nebulous still and we're going to have to think about if it's possible for a logo to represent some of the things the foundation does. Miriam's was a stack of books. And I said, well, Miriam, the first thing we did was a piano. So that's not there. So I'm just trying to think about the breadth of what the foundation wants to do. I really think we need to have a conversation with the friends and kind of talk about the places that we're both comfortable working on, that we're working together because I think it's really important that everybody collaborates. And I think the logo could be part of that. So that was my last item.
Leslie, I, I like that because we're trying to move away from it just being about books, right? In terms of the library. So-
I, I think the fact, the fact that the foundation raised, what, almost $12,000 for a piano tells you that we're not just about books and we're a lot of sentiment and also about moving forward and taking care of things that happen in real time.
That's great.
And I'm sorry I've missed a couple of meetings, but now I'm here and I'm, I'm going to be sorry for that, too.
Well, glad to have you back, Leslie.
Thanks. And thanks, Matt, for waking me up one day.
Not a problem. So Dennis, any update you'd like to share with us regarding the Friends of the Library?
Yes. We've made a lot of contributions for the repairs and our checking balance is now down to $4,351. We still have savings of $7,700 roughly. Since the last meeting, we've given $1,000 towards the piano repair, $551 for magnets, and renewed the $500 for the intrepid passes. The donations of books coming in, really, we've gotten an awful lot of books. The team does a great job Wednesday in sorting them. And we're working with Jimmy to have the book sale in December. And that would probably follow after the Etsy fair, which is definitely set for November 20th. We have a, in the homebound and organization activity, Mary Noe now is back on hold until the 24th of October. And the Peace Corps, American Legion, and Sunshine are on hold. But the American Legion contacted me and they may want DVDs and some items again to be sent overseas to the troops for the holidays. I had reached out to the Mary Noe sisters to get, make sure that maybe we can include them with whatever we're doing with the brothers and the priests. And they're going to get back to me by the end of the month. Right now, they're in a total lockdown. Nothing has happened with Cedar Manor or Betty Norton. She kept the trend going. She lost another book. The homebound delivery is now part of the library volunteer program, working with Diana Lennon. So I have made reports, have sent the reports out, breaking down what we do for the friends and what I do as a volunteer for the library. I reinstated the volunteer benefit report and I enclosed that, which I sent to Kathy Bean, to show what savings and benefit the volunteers bring. Now we're back on a weekly basis. I did hear just while I was waiting to get back on this call from the, the gentleman, the student up at Yorktown Heights about the program and trying to merge that with what we do at the library. So books aren't just thrown into the garbage. And that's basically it. We have the coin box where we make, you know, the coin contributions. And the one thing I definitely would check with Karen, but you remember, we had the neighborhood kids come down and do the contests. So one of the neighbors asked if we were going to resume that. So I'll get with you to see if we can get that going again. And that's it. Are there any, any questions?
No, I just want to extend a thank you for the work. I hope that all, many, if not all, the volunteers stayed with the, with the friends, I should say, through the, the last year or two, when they haven't been able to do a lot. And that hopefully you'll find new members as well.
And Nancy Lutwin is going to be nominated to re, to return to the Friends Board. Barbara may not be able to continue, but we may keep her on as an advisor.
Terrific. Any other questions or comments for Dennis? I want to thank you again, Dennis.
Thank you.
Jonathan Marshall would like to turn the microphone over to you if I can.
Okay, thank you. Also, thank you, Matt, for the trustee book club that starts, first one starts tomorrow. Thank you for letting all the trustees know about it and hope to see you as many that can make it tomorrow and the other two occasions on Zoom. And again, we thank you for that. But, you know, I'm also sorry that on November 15th, the date that the, the board, sort of the Westchester Board Group that's going to be talking to other board groups, sort of like the, the initial meeting of, of that first small group, turns out to be on November 15th, which is your next meeting date. So we apologize for that and we'll have to make sure, we'll chat with the, with Karen Zevon and make sure that the next one, A, does not conflict, but also that we keep you and, and Alice in the loop on that. Because I know Alice had expressed interest in attending via Zoom. So again, we're sorry for, for, for that, that scheduling conflict. But we'll keep you in the loop on what's going on. And we, you know, we look forward to, you know, to any, you know, I'll share the ideas that were talked about at that initial meeting and then we'll figure out, you know, your input and also of course getting your input on that. So, because again, the, the idea is, is trying to connect the different boards of the libraries throughout Westchester library system in some type of way. The education part is great, but I think there may be some other ways that we could do it. If you had any ideas that you want us to share at that initial meeting, certainly send them to me and well, I'll definitely share them. But we'll go forward on that. And third is, is just the- Uh but we'll go forward on that. And uh, third is, is just the um. It's, you're probably, it just sort of like to bring up different things that uh uh Westchester library system is doing. And uh one of the things is is the digital equity projects that uh, I'm not sure. Exactly what is their involvement with um uh with Austin right now. I know they, they've got some. Um, they're doing some, working with fourteen Head Start programs uh in distributing over uh. And and to working with sixty families uh in the White Plains and Mount Vernon. Uh Head Start programs right now. And I know there's, I'm sure there's Head Start programs and and. Programs up in uh Austin, that would be of interest. And uh so. Uh, I don't know, uh we'll talk with Karen and just try to make sure that that we're just. Connecting uh with with the any programs and and ideas and opportunities. Because I think there's, there's definitely a uh an interest and uh and uh. Uh funding to support uh the digital equity projects uh through many uh. Uh communities in Westchester where they can be of use. So uh, I think Austin is is one that I think uh. Has been, is certainly on the list, but I don't, I don't, not sure exactly what has been done up to this uh date. Uh so we'll try to find out, find out more about that, but also any programs that you and interests that you have and ideas. Uh to help uh for the digital equity equity uh idea and concept uh for Austin. We're happy to uh to share those and try to connect uh with Pat Brigham and and her group. And the last uh is any questions uh that you have regarding WLS?
I don't have any, and are there any other questions perhaps?
I I appreciate that you come, Jonathan, because it has strengthened our relationship with WLS. So thank you for.
My pleasure.
Doing your participation.
Thank you, and it helps us keep keep informed, so thank you.
Terrific. Thank you again, Jonathan. And thank you to all of our volunteers who've helped us so much. We look forward to a a great year um as we finish up uh this calendar year and move into two thousand twenty-two. The next item on our agenda, if uh Karen perhaps you're ready for the uh operating budget revenue report, directors report. I will uh lower my volume.
All right. I'm going to try to be brief. I'm going to skip over the, all of the um information that I have in my report in regards to buildings and grounds. Because we will be talking about that later in the agenda. Um suffice it to say that a lot of time and um sweat and tears. Were spent in regards to buildings and grounds. We are moving nicely along in our technology um transition and I just have to say one more time. That if it wasn't for the forward-thinking of this board and the push to really do this, I don't think we would have made it this far. So I want to thank you. This has got to be the best thing that we've done. The um difference in the technology, you know, we have our hiccups. It's difficult. Me learning some of these things that we have to learn is a little scary, but um. But I have to say, you know, the difficulties that we're having before, we're making it very, making our work harder. And um and I'm really, really thankful for that. Um Alison has finished up the first round of the ECF funding request, so we received a commitment letter that we are receiving sixteen thousand five hundred. Fifty dollars for Chromebooks and hotspots and um she submitted a second request for a smaller amount of money. I want to say off the top of my head, it was like two to three thousand dollars, something like that for additional, a few additional things. You know about the mask mandate that we've instituted? We talked about that at the last meeting. It's going along pretty well. Um, big thank you to everybody at the service desks for the work that they do. They do it with compassion and grace, with professionalism. And um things go lots smoother than I think they otherwise would. We'll be talking about the meeting room use policy later in the agenda, so we won't talk about that now. Um, still looking to fill our librarian two position. I can give you an update in executive session when we get to that point. Safety and Security Committee meeting to uh update the, the um procedures and we're moving along nicely. We are um updating the handbook as well as some ancillary procedures to go along with that. And then once we're finished with that, we're putting together a training plan. That'll be good. Thank goodness for Terry Kepler, who is with us now in the business office. She is uh helping out very much and I'm happy to have her. As far as our long-range planning, we are um, we have rolled out the program surveys. So if you have attended a a program in the library, you should have been prompted to fill out a survey and I hope that you do fill out the survey. We're trying to gauge who's attending our programs and how our programs are being received. And we'll be doing this for a few more year, uh few more weeks. Mallory has has really taken this on and I'm thankful for that. And we are still moving forward with our cross-departmental long-range planning teams to uh talk about specific parts. Of the long-range plan that don't fit nicely into any one department or that can't be handled sort of in any one department. So I'll update that for you. Um, I've reinstituted the implementation matrix that we used in the last. Um, the last go-around, I am going to do it more collaboratively this time and have the each department head fill in their own information. Rather than me do it, um and make it a little crazy or unwieldy, but we'll see how it goes. Michael Holmes was able to join us for a tour. Matt was with us for the tour and it was great to show him around. He was very impressed with our facility. It was nice um to watch him interact with the staff, who he had only seen via Zoom.
I find it shocking that he had not been to the.
Working towards a way to better collect and better present and better use our statistics. This is part of our long-range planning process and it's part of something that we've wanted to do for a very long time. So we're happy to be moving ahead in that slowly, but moving ahead. We will be hosting uh FEMA's mobile unit. I finally got the dates from them. We're going to be, and the the. The um intent of this is for folks who were impacted by the flooding that happened um earlier in the season. Where they can come, they can file a claim, they can submit additional paperwork for a claim that they've already filed, meet with somebody, get answers. Um they'll be setting up their truck in the lower part of the parking lot, but against the building, not the wall. Um, they'll be setting up this Friday, this coming Friday. They will not be open for business on Friday, that's setup day. They'll be open for business Saturday, Monday and Tuesday. And so our parking lot's gonna be a bit of a nightmare during that time, just forewarning you, but I think it's for a good cause. And um and Mallory will put it, be putting out information to the public, too, to let them know what's going on, but also to give folks a heads up about. Maybe some parking lot situations.
Um Karen, this is related to FEMA.
Sure.
FEMA uh FEMA also offers to cover um funeral costs for anyone who died because of COVID.
I did not know that.
Yes, and that is out, there is being published, so I don't know if they're gonna have people showing up for something like that.
I can draw my contact and see if that's part of it. They're supposed to be sending me their public information so that I can push it out, too. And perhaps that'll be part of it, but let me just make a note to myself, ask my contact. Because that's good to be able to tell people.
And people are showing up for that.
Mm-hmm. Could be. Thank you. Um. Couple more things. We have been represented at the farmer's market. Thank you to Diana Lennon and um and our team. We've been there a couple of times now, always very, very well received. We issue new library cards, but I'm happy to say that most of the folks who visit us already have library cards. This is our experience throughout the community. It's a great experience and we like to be able to then tell them about all the great things that we're doing. We're slowly bringing back uh some of the programs that we were used to in the past, such as the in-person task classes. With um Putnam Northern Westchester Voces, the ESOL classes. Um and then a lot of things are still virtual, too. We're keeping, we're keeping those as well. We had some Latin music dance classes, which were very well received. Those were in person. And very, very well received. Um, the First Steps program has come back to us on Fridays and they had a big um fin dig. Was it last Friday? I think, I think it was a Friday before in person. It was so nice. We had the whole lower parking lot closed off. Um, and we had just moms and kids, dads and kids, moms and kids and dads and kids, just all over the place. And it was just lovely. It was, it kind of felt like we were getting back to normal in a way. We are installing, thank you to Kevin Robinson with the help of Alison, a Minecraft server in the children's room. Where uh kids can go into a special server and play Minecraft and build worlds, which I think is going to be very popular. Um, and I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything amazing and fantastic. Uh, where Suzie has reached out to Girls Inc. and we are bringing them in for some um. Uh programs for girls and their focus is the development of the whole girl. The programs that she's looking to bring in have to do with STEM and data analysis and looking forward to seeing what that entails. And I just want to give um a shout out to uh Marie Pierre, who has. Was part of the Nyla Alternatives Pathway Program, which was sort of set aside because of the um, the change of of leadership. But she has now been, she's joined the Library Workers of Color Coalition Roundtable and that group is focusing on similar issues. And also broader issues. So I'm very happy that she's involved in that. Does anyone have any questions about my report?
If you, if I wanted to share with someone, um or if you wanted to tell a foundation, for instance. What, with the Minecraft um effort, um how, how would you describe it? Is it a video gaming? Is it uh? I don't, I don't want to put a label on it, but is there a way to express it that even people like me would know what it is or rather?
I can give you from my perspective what it is, but I would encourage you to speak to Kevin, because he's much more fluent in that language. It's um, it's a world-building program. It's a computer, a computer game.
Well, that's why, yeah.
And it's a world-building program, but it's, it's very um, very sort of hands-on and. Helps develop skills that are important when it comes to engineering, design, um architecture. And things like that. So it is used in educational settings, but it's also really, the kids love it. It's super fun and they, they go crazy with it.
Does it, is it individuals or is it teams or?
You, it can be either, some, some.
Do we have any idea how many kids it'll touch or how many kids will access it or?
Um, Kevin would know better than that, but I, you know, it's a very popular, it's a very popular thing, so I have a feeling we're gonna see kids.
Spend additional funds on or recording budgeted or?
We were art, we were able to use some of the funds that came into us uh for the teen programming. Um, through the, what is that grant? The SPF? I'm sorry, Alice.
The Strategic Prevention Framework Partnerships for Success Grant.
What was that again? I'm sorry.
The Strategic Prevention Framework Partnerships for Success Grant from SAMSA.
Thank you, Alice. So we were able.
The open door gives the library ten thousand dollars a year to supplement positive youth development programs.
And this was a piece of that. It's not costing ten thousand dollars.
Is this a unique um effort? Is this something that we, we want to publicize or it's just, is this mundane or routine stuff?
Once we get it up and running, we want to publicize it, but it's not, it has been done by other libraries before. It's, we're not the first.
But it hasn't been done here.
No, it's not been done here.
So it's a new feature and I think it adds to the uh allure for parents who want to know the kids will be um accessing. The safe um program.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I I also was wondering if you wouldn't want some decent teenagers volunteering to help some of these kids. Um, because there are kids like my son who mastered Minecraft and went on, who could certainly go back and help. People still wanting to do Minecraft. It's, you know, way below his pay grade now, which is ridiculous. But I think he would love to help some kids and I'm wondering if it's not, I'm glad that Matt circled back to this. Because I think it's an opportunity to try and bring families in and say, you know, we could use a few teenage volunteers and. Then, you know, whatever the kids do, the parents like, um. I I think there's a lot of potential there. Minecraft is still huge in this world.
Yes, it is. And I think that's uh one of the nice things about the fact that the teen department and the children's department. Are working on this project together, um because bringing the teens in as more mentor-type um individuals, I think is a really nice thing. That they're talking.
What is the grade level that Minecraft or the, I'm sorry, the age level that Minecraft appeals to?
I would say as young as seven and they tend to go up to like ten, twelve. But then there are older kids who still enjoy playing it, like my son.
And there are adults that play it.
And there are adults.
I hate to say it.
And then what do they move on to after Minecraft?
Oh, gosh. Well, usually they're doing Rob- Roblox in concert with Minecraft, flying between the two of them. What do they go on after that?
That's hard to say.
Some do Minecraft and that's it. That's what they do. It's a, it's a very cool little world. Um, I was sad when my son left it because I enjoyed it with him, so.
Minecraft was popular like when I was in high school and I know people who still have the pieces, who have the things. They're more like collector's items. I don't, I was very happy um when some of my days, you know, I go to the library and I'm reading. And I saw like the kids playing and I was like, I didn't even realize it was still popular. So I'm like, is that Minecraft? Like, I remember that in the lunchroom. Um and they were like, yeah, and I had no idea that it was still around. And I was speaking to a friend of mine. He was like, oh, yeah, I still have all the pieces and the new stuff, so I don't really think you move on. I think it just kind of gets, it changes a little bit with technology and then it just becomes like collector types. Like, I guess, old, like how baseball cards were, but I think it just keeps building.
Hi Alfina, and I think it's a really good um area that we could grow.
Yeah.
I would love to build out on this. I may be wrong, but I think this is one of those trends that the library could get on board with and build out.
Mm-hmm.
Kevin has been very involved with um Kevin and Suzie. That's been a consistent theme with teen programming. Is having like gaming nights and stuff.
Is Kevin the younger guy that's there? I don't want to call him a kid, but he was with, he was very good. He was with like a, and they were different ages and it, I mean, they put all the tables together. And you can just tell they were having a really, like, it was really, like, it was really a sight to see. Like they, you know, like young men just having a good time and playing this game and really just being content, like. It was really like nice to see them like that. And then there were younger ones who kind of wanted to learn and they didn't kind of push them off. They were teaching them, so it was really nice. And I do think that um we should definitely get involved. And maybe even, you know, we talk about intergenerational things, like maybe like parents or so, so they can maybe understand more. So I think it's something good for us to do.
That's an interesting idea of actually explaining it to the parents.
Yeah.
Yep.
Some of them may know, I mean, you know, or they may know from their, our grandparents, because they brought it for their, you know, it's been around for a while.
And I'd like to, if, if you don't mind, I'd like to add one little bit of, one little piece of surprise news. Um, late-breaking news. I learned that we, our library was nominated for the IMLS. National Medal for Museum and Library Service by Congressman Mondaire Jones. So.
Can you say that one more time? I M L S?
IMLS, which is the Institute for Museum and Library Services, for the National Medal for Museum and Library Service. So Mallory and Karen, there's no guarantee, no guarantee. We were nominated. Now we have to do all the applications and get the letters of recommendation. Um, but Mallory and I are flying on this news and we are working, we'll be working on that over the next week. Everything is doing.
Very exciting that he nominated us.
I'm totally thrilled. I'm totally thrilled and thankful.
Nomination to this, right? So that's pretty cool that he picked us.
Pretty cool and I'll be calling his office tomorrow to thank him.
So you're accumulating um things like Minecraft and the IMLF nomination for the annual meeting? You, you start that now?
When I can think about the annual meeting, yes. My little annual meeting folder.
Wait, when is that, Karen?
Well. Last year, we did a video at the end of the year in lieu of the meeting that we usually do in. Last year, we did a video at the end of the year in lieu of the meeting that we usually do in June.
Got it.
We have a lot to include, despite, we have a lot to include.
Yes.
So we can move on to the committee reports. The first one on the list is the president's report. I do not have anything additional to add that won't be coming up in the committees or the uh, referendums or resolutions. Um, we'll move on to policy and bylaws and personnel. If I can add, I'd like to turn the mic over to you.
Okay, well, let's see. Uh, with the committee that today, and we have two policies which are also um, going to be before you tonight. And we're pushing them, we're pushing them as quickly as we can to be um, for a first reading. And then hopefully for second reading, since they're active, because the library really needs to have them in place. The first one is the workplace violence policy, which you have in your pocket. And um, you received an updated one today along with the um, the form, which was pulled together by Karen, a reporting form, should anyone have anything to report concerning workplace violence when it happens. Um, we believe this, this policy has a lot of grit to it now. It's, it's substantial and it should be able to be um, take care of any circumstance within the library. So we have workplace violence. Um, I hope everybody had a chance to read this policy. I don't know if anyone has any questions or not regarding it.
I wanted to add that um, I do uh, share uh, policies that are related to the facilities and this is one of them with the buildings and ground staff. I asked them to give me their comments and feedback. Um, just because sometimes they have a unique insight into some of these things. So um, they, they always get a chance to look and comment. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you, thank you. Um, and I think that's really important. So they didn't have any feedback that you need to give us?
Well, Kathy basically sent um, revised versions of both policies at 1:15, 1:13 today. So it must have been after your meeting?
It was after a meeting, yes. Uh, the next policy is the meeting space policy, which is another one, which we really need to have in place for the library. Because as the uh, I want to say, as we're moving back to the new normal. It sounds weird, but that's where we're going. Um, the, we have many members of the community who would like to meet at the library. And um, they're knocking at the door, so to speak. So we need a policy which is going to meet those needs before we are at our normal. So this is almost a transition policy to get us from where we were during the pandemic to the next step of where we need to go. And um, it would really help Karen and everybody in the library if we could address this meeting space policy as soon as possible. Um, that's another, these two are side items. And hopefully, everybody uh, agrees with what you have in front of you. And we can move forward with that, especially with the first reading tonight.
So we're basically um, only allowing meetings on the lower level.
Correct.
Spaces is, is basically our policy right now.
At this time. Yes. So um, in addition to that, we're going back to our uh, policies. And basically, we're looking at those which has not really been reviewed for a significant period of time. The first one, the top of the list for us was the lost, lost books policy, which is the information in that one is already part of our circulation policy. So we want to rescind that policy. We don't need to have that one anymore as a separate policy because it's included in the circulation policy. Um, we're looking at the art exhibit policy. And we really want to review that. And in reviewing that, feel that it's very important to incorporate um, not only the language that's in the strategic plan, which addresses ideas of expanding beyond what we have been doing. But also to um, to expand the type of art which we are encouraging people to exhibit at the library. So it won't, you know, maybe not just pictures hanging on the wall. And I don't want to say just pictures hanging on the wall, but what if we want, what if an artist want to do a fashion exhibit? Or um, some kind of creative, multi-dimensional um, presentation. And so we want to incorporate that into the art exhibit policy. So that is to come in the future for you. We had quite an extensive discussion about the bulletin board policy. And our thinking at this point is that a bulletin board is very limited in scope. Maybe what, the library still needs elements of the bulletin board policy. They still use that bulletin board and it gives us a good structure. However, maybe the policy should be more like communication policy. So we can get the various digital screens incorporated into this and other, other means of communication, which are primarily digital. But um, so that policy also will be addressing and it will be coming to you in the future. So that's where we are now. We have other policies on our list to look at, but that's where the committee is at the moment.
Are there any questions or any comments regarding the policies?
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Very much. If we can move on to the finance committee, I don't know if there's any updates from the finance.
I don't believe so.
No, I don't have anything to report today.
Okay.
Right. And buildings and grounds, there's plenty going on.
Where to start?
I know. That's what I was just thinking.
Well, we have an update with meeting with Ed Braddock.
Yes, thank you for reminding me about that. Um, Cecilia, do you mind if I start there? Do you want to start?
That's fine. Ed Braddock was really a wonderful resource at the meeting, was telling us, you know, what best practice would be. He recommended our, uh, looking into using a commissioning agent, which really pinged for Karen. Uh, and I made one. Uh, which um, was like a dead end. So basically keep track of our several projects, keep tracks, uh, keep track of things like warranties, details that are associated with our different projects and multiple construction uh, items. Uh, which would really kind of lighten Molly's and Karen's uh, daily schedule. Um, and then there's still the wall study uh, measurements that need to be addressed. Maybe using a different surveying company. That's all I have.
Right. So one of the, two of the, one of the big things that came out of the Buildings and Grounds Committee uh, for me, and then due to the subsequent failures that we had with our wells and, and our systems in the following weeks, which we can talk about in a sec, um, I think we're at the point where we really need a direction from the board. Molly and I really need a direction from the board about how to proceed um, in terms of our HVAC um, issues. Molly had, and she can speak a little bit more to this, but she has reached out to other um, consultants. But one of the issues that we've had recently with many of the building consultants that we've had to use, surveyors, engineers, et cetera. Everybody is backed up and um, getting people to get back to you and set meetings has become a real challenge. So when we had our meeting with Ed, uh, he had reviewed all of the information that we have from the different um, you know, from the analysis that was done, from the project that was done. I had sent him the historical data as well. My sense from him at that meeting, and, and those who are at that meeting can correct me if I'm wrong, was we really should you decide on what we want to do and move ahead. Am I, am I characterizing that correctly? I'm not?
No, there was no sense of that. He said bluntly, this system was designed for it. You didn't have a big enough field to collect the water. You don't build it on a hill with such a narrow strip of land. He said, this system is failing. He said, you're repairing parts, but the parts that aren't being repaired are already worn out and breaking down. So you're putting good money at the bed. He said, this system from day one, when they opened the building, had problems. It had the problems we have today then, and those problems will continue. He said that this is a drain on the library. You didn't get a sense of that. He was blunt. Not only, in my opinion, is it a drain upon the finances of the library, it's a drain on the staff of the library. When you and Molly and whoever else is involved have to stop what you're doing to focus on maintaining the heating and air conditioning because the staff can't work because it's too hot or too cold and we have to close the building down. This becomes a surefire failure. And that's what Ed Braddock told us.
So how do we get off the wells and move?
You know, accommodating system. It's a long list.
It's a long list. But he also recognized that it's not something that is going, you're going to be able to do tomorrow. This is going to take time.
No, so the, the consideration now is, we, we did bring up uh, in this year of meetings, that perhaps we should move away from clean air and perhaps move away from our engineer, um, OLA. And uh, and the reality is that these vendors, these experts are becoming hard to get a hold of. That doesn't mean we have to continue with who we work with, but I do think that initially that OLA has enough expertise about our system that they can and would guide us appropriately to find a different vendor to accommodate the expansion and replacement of the heating and air conditioning. And I also think this alludes to the necessity to increase the expertise of our staff, which will come up at future conversations. But I bring it up now in the context that the challenge isn't limited to the outside vendors. It's also a challenge to how we can handle the implementation of the new system.
We had a meeting that I attended in person back in, I can't even remember, July? When was our in-person meeting?
We get an independent commissioning agent. With the problems that you're running into in finding people to respond, to getting people into repair, to all of the, I guess, mechanical things that are going on in the building. Would it help at this point to make, make that the top priority, to get a commissioning agent in there? Because that person may be able to make those kinds of contacts that we need. And that would be their focus. I got the impression that Ed was referring to getting that person in at the end of the installation so that they would make sure that the systems were running the way they were supposed to run. In other words, so you would have your engineer, they would design the systems, you would install the systems, and then an independent agent would come in at the end of the process to make sure that the systems are running as designed and planned. But I'm not, you know, I, I could have that wrong.
I thought they were concurrent.
Concurrent?
Because, because this person would be like the liaison between the different contractors and get an understanding for how they're supposed to work and just monitor that there are no surprises and things are going well.
I think that's the clerk of the works um, person he was talking about. But maybe he was talking about an independent commissioning agent throughout the whole process as well as a clerk of the works.
So 2007. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
2007, that's when we opened. It is almost 2022. This system has dragged us down for almost 15 years. Ed Braddock, who is an abundantly blunt human being, seems to have indicated that we need to move away from the system. When we had a meeting in July in person, I thought that's what we were talking about doing. Am I wrong?
No.
Shanti, you look like you don't agree. I, I thought that we said we were going to bring in somebody because we were feeling that we needed to get different consultants and we needed to move away from the system.
Yes. Okay, I unmuted myself. So we did discuss that, but it was not possible to bring in other engineers at this time because they're all too busy. There was no one interested in the work. There was no one interested in exploring and giving us an opinion before we decided who we would go forward with, which is why it seems reasonable to continue with OLA at this time as a consulting engineer. Because we would, we, we would lose additional ground waiting and looking for someone who's ready, willing, and able to talk to us. So instead of starting the process from zero, we could start the process at step one because OLA already has the institutional knowledge that we're looking for.
So what do we need to do 15 years later? What are we doing to fix this? So here from now, the board won't have to have this conversation.
We've made progress with the heating. I don't think there's any question about that. Now the air conditioning is our priority. And I think that it makes sense for this board to consider getting a proposal from OLA to work on the whole system.
Is it possible that if you put out a bond that there would be interest in somebody fixing it instead of? Because I remember the conversation I had at the board table about the library getting ripped off with this. I remember that conversation and that there needed to be some kind of, you know, and basically Ed Braddock is talking about a project manager being there watching what's going on the whole time, but you know, there's nothing, I don't know, I don't remember anybody agreeing to change course when we, we had that conversation because I remember um, you know, it was like, oh, well, you know, we're waiting till we finish this piece, but is it possible? I don't know the answer to that question. Is it possible that if there were a bond for the entire project, that they would be interested in it then?
One of the, I'm sorry. Uh, one of the conversations, well, that I keep having over and over again with OLA is that I feel we need to figure out a way to get away from clean air. And my hope is that if we put together a project and put it out to bid, that we will have other vendors who are interested in doing the work and who are in fact the lower bids. It's always sort of a gamble because unfortunately, clean air knows our building, knows our system. And this last time around, when we put the boiler project out to bid, they were the low bid. But you know, the hope is that we would be able to get ourselves into the position where we're not, where we're not at their mercy. Because frankly, that's how I feel, that's what I feel like we are right now at their mercy.
The wells continue to degrade and fail. We are 15 years into this project.
Yes, we just need to move on. We.
I, I, like, I read.
Need to get a proposal off those wells and we decommission them. But what, what we do have to decide is, you know, if we're going out for a bond, you know, we got to do it. It's going to cost us money.
But we need to know, we can't. But we need to know, we can't frame a bond until we find alternatives and what it's gonna cost.
And that's where I think, you know, it's always, OLA knows us best at this point and can get us started down the road at least. Do you get that feeling, Karen? That they can at least get us started, give us some estimates, and, you know, help us take that next step.
Yes.
Are they open to changing course, OLA?
They have been the whole time. Their initial plan was to get us off entirely, but the price tag was a shocker to everyone. So we asked them to change course and to wean us off the wells gradually over time, which is the path that we've been on. They're more than ready to help us get off the wells entirely as soon as I give them the go-ahead to put together a proposal for you to review and potentially agree to to move into that direction and start with the design work at the next
The first proposal would be for signing OLA on to take on the project. I would like that to be presented to the board so we have something to discuss.
They're, so you would discuss their proposal. They would present a proposal and you, the board would discuss it and either approve it or not approve it.
Until we get to that point,
Right.
we're still going to talk about what we should do next.
Right, right. So I'm, what I'm saying to the board is I need the permission of the board to get that proposal to be able to bring it to the board.
I'm sorry, we're going to go to OLA and pay them?
No, have them put together, have them, have them put together a proposal for the design and planning of an entirely new HVAC system.
But specifically a proposal for what we, OLA would charge us to come up with that plan.
Right, right.
So it's a request for their, their cost.
Right.
First we get their cost, we sign them on, and then they come up with the plan.
That's right. That's the sequence.
Okay.
I would also like, not to complicate matters, but I will. I would also like the board to be open if we do in fact have to go to a bond, which I think is more than likely. We have the roof membrane replacement that has to be done relatively soon and potentially the wall, which we're still gathering information. But I think if we're going to be going for a large project, we need to be wise, oh, stop the computer. We need to be wise about making sure that we don't have other large projects looming in our future that we might have to go back to the taxpayer.
So Karen, to clarify,
Molly and I can start working on figuring that out.
We have the roof, you're saying?
At this point in time, I would ask the board to consider if there are, anyone has any objections to requesting OLA to provide us with a quote to see what they would charge us to move on with the project, ultimately to come up with a new proposal for the heating and air conditioning system.
But what were the three things Karen said? She said the roof, the HVAC, and there was a third.
Let me mute myself.
Retaining wall.
Thank you, Molly. Because Karen's absolutely, whoever said it, these are big ticket items. We need to assess the costs and, and move, take action. Stop kicking the can down the road. 15 years.
Well, you can't say we didn't try to make the wells work.
I don't think I've attended a single board meeting where the HVAC has not been discussed.
The crack ceiling in the adult section and large window insulation. So whether these are part of a large project that we would give to OLA to add into their proposal or if there's anything there that we need to address immediately, I'm not sure.
I don't know if I heard the first part of what you said, Amanda, about
We did not, we did not hear it.
I apologize. I didn't realize I was on mute.
Okay, I'll be brief. At the meeting, in addition to the items that were just mentioned, we had some other items which are of major concern, I believe. One are the entry doors. I don't know how immediately we need to address that and have them repaired. And another one was the parking lot circle, crack ceiling in the adult section, and large window insulation. So maybe some of these are immediate and maybe some of them get added onto this OLA proposal, but I don't want to lose sight of them.
And, and by the way, also some of the new meeting spaces that we want to configure. Right? I mean, maybe we just have to consider getting all of this infrastructure, getting a number for it, getting it all together so we have a comprehensive number and then can make an informed decision.
All of that is relevant. I think the, the primary issue before us is to find out if any of us have any objections or any reason not to ask Karen to get OLA to provide a quote for them to do this project. So we have something to discuss and vote on and either reject or approve, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, so we can decide what direction we're going. And if it's not that, if that's not the direction, we still have made a decision about. So please take this moment to review your thoughts and share. If you have any objections or you would like us to proceed, we're not going to take a vote. Silence will be considered an acceptance of this path that we're about to take.
Proceed.
I'm just grateful that no one's defending geothermal systems anymore at the meeting. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Yay!
Karen, this time you can reach out to Jim Dolan and see what he can put on paper for us. And maybe he can call in at the next meeting. I, I expect that his proposal will generally questions and that we'll have the questions that will extend beyond that proposal. And it might be good to reacquaint ourselves with his opinions.
And, and might Ed Braddock be interested in helping us coordinate some bids on all these other projects as well?
He has his plate full right now.
Okay. With other, other consulting jobs?
Yes.
The other consulting engineer exists. So we will, if, if there is no more question, any more comments on that topic, then we'll move on to the resolutions. There are three before us.
Yep, one more thing. I was hoping to update you on where we are with the wall briefly. Molly has been working very closely with the engineers at SGH. We have been trying to get the previous surveyors to send us some additional information that we would want to provide to the new surveyors, because we will be getting new surveyors, so that we can use the, the old information that we know is good prior to the last year or so. They were very reluctant and hesitant and started asking us questions which were making me uncomfortable. So I got our attorney involved and sent him a strongly worded letter. Now they're finally calling me back. But we are moving ahead with obtaining new surveyors and they, the new company was on site last weekend and hopefully will be providing us with a proposal soon so that we can move forward with the periodic surveying that we know we need to do. Thank you.
SGH was the original company?
No, they're our current engineers that we're using for the wall.
So we're up to the first of three resolutions. Resolution 27 regarding a donation. It reads, resolve that the Board of Trustees greatly accepts a $50 donation in memory of Susan Kelly from Martha Bay. Are there any comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept and second so we can proceed to a vote. Amanda, Cecilia, thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any objections, any extensions that being noted carries 6-0? Resolution 28, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the following personnel changes. Karen, any comments or background before we proceed?
Diana Wendell is one of the subs that we are hiring. Diana Lennon has referred to her in her report as some of the subs that will help get us through the times when we are down staff. And Jefferson, whose name I'm going to mispronounce, so I'm not going to say, is our new part-time circulation clerk.
Very good. There are no questions or comments. We'll proceed if I can get a motion to accept. I have, and a second. All those in favor, resolution 28, indicate by saying aye. Aye, any abstentions, any objections that being noted carries 6-0? Resolution 29, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the retention of Bond, Shonik, and King for the library's labor and employment services as covered in the October 6, 2021 letter stating forth the basic terms of engagement, including an annual retainer fee of $18,000 per year for the period of November 16, 2021 to November 15, 2024. Any questions or comments? Karen, would you say we're getting our money's worth?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, okay. There being no questions or comments on, if there can be a motion to accept, then a second so we can proceed to a vote. And we have that. And all those in favor of resolution 29, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, if we have any abstentions or any objections, that being noted carries 6-0. We can now move on to the next topic, which is old business, the Board of Trustees vacancy. It took me longer than I, I'd hoped, but I drafted and will submit to you via email the letter requesting people who are interested in the position to contact us. And I, I just want to remind everyone that we are not obligated to fill that seat before the next election cycle. So I have every intention of filling it as soon as possible with the participation of the board, obviously, but we're not there yet. What are any questions on that topic? And there being none that I see, we can move on to the new business.
I have a question about something that I raised before about the getting back the documents from the Austin Historical Society because they are not accessible there and they are documents that were formerly held at the library. Dr. Ashner's project as well as the Austining directories and the Austining yearbooks they have. So if not getting at the actual work back, getting copies back, I don't know, is, is that something that the rest of the board is interested in or it doesn't really matter?
It matters.
We should do that.
Yes, we need to do it.
Okay.
I spoke briefly with Diana, the head of Adult Services, and Allison Robbins because she has a background in archives and archives management. You know, they're both stretched a little thin right now, but we did do some preliminary talking about going to look at the quantity of material so that we had a sense of how much we're talking about and how we could effectively and safely house it in the library. So we haven't made a lot of progress, but we did have that initial conversation.
So like maybe the beginning of the year, you all will be able to come back and say what, you know, it's how, how and if it's possible?
Yes, I think that's early in the new year. I'm a little without our librarian too and adult services, that's kind of a setback. But I think some of the other projects will be off our plates and so we can look at that more carefully.
Also, I also wanted to bring up, you know, I know right now because of what's going on with the wall and not be able to park on the lower level, I noticed when I came into, you know, in the past, we've talked about the parking lot and the restaurant. And the other day I was trying to drive into the driveway and there was one of the employees of the restaurant who was navigating in between, you know, down on the side of the wall, across the driveway in order to deliver food to a car that was sitting in the library parking lot. So I don't know if, if there needs to be some negotiation about how, how much they should be paying for a parking spot or something, but it is completely ridiculous. If they want to build their own parking lot, there's land behind their restaurant, they could build the parking lot. But
There's parking back there. They just don't want the inconvenience.
I know there is.
Our spot. They have plenty of park, they have, they have parking back.
And also, and also there was another time, this was a couple of months ago though, that, that happened this week. I mean, I'm sorry, last week. That happened last week to me. The, the, um, one day I was coming from somewhere in the evening and the, the library had been closed a long time and there were like five, six cars parked in, you know, in that first row, patrons of, patrons of the restaurant. So, you know, there needs to be some, something. I don't, I don't know what, but you know, just to continue to let them, you know, do what they want to is, is, is not, I, I don't think we should continue to do that.
I think, I, I'm I would appreciate some new ideas, some guidance or something. I feel like I've exhausted, I've spoken to the folks at the restaurant, I've spoken
I remember.
I've sent letters, I've put flyers on people's cars. Kathy's put flyers on people's cars.
Yeah.
And, you know, those, those tactics don't seem to be terribly effective. I know at one point Matt had suggested putting a gate and at the time I said, absolutely not. And then the other day I said, I wish we had a gate. I, I, I'm wondering if, and I think, Amanda, you had suggested at one point bringing in some expertise. So I don't feel that I have the, the, I don't know, the resources or the, I, I, I don't know how to tackle this problem is what I'm saying.
Right.
I would love to talk with our lawyer and I think because what I'm only, my consideration is that if something happens in that parking lot, they're not going to look to, to take legal action against that restaurant. They're going to say it happened in our parking lot. So I feel like it need a sign or something that's like, if you park here and you're not a library patron, like, we're now responsible for you, like something of that nature. And I think even if it's like, you know, a cease and desist type of situation, something with them that like, they just need something. Because, you know, we, you know, we're just, we're in that kind of society. They're not going to say, oh, I got hit and, you know, I was going to get my food. They're not going to want to take responsibility.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but like I said, when I tried to get into the other day and this woman is walking in front of my car at a pace, smells pace, and then she goes in and hands off a bag to a car? This, I mean, really, a slide over gate or something at this point is what, you know, seems like what needs that, that, that's the only thing, the way they're going to get the message.
This is not a situation that we can control. We, we are really at risk when the library is closed and the parking lot is used extensively by the community, whether they're patrons of the restaurant or not. We're at risk when people who We're at risk when people who ignore the signs that say that the parking space is only for library use. Beyond that, we can't tell them not to park there. We can only tell them that they're doing it without consent. If somebody runs and trips in the parking lot, whether or not they're a patron, they could sue anybody. They could sue someone across the street. We can't stop them from suing or naming the library a lawsuit. The reality is that if we moved the driveway, it would give us a little bit more control. But that's not realistic. We don't have a realistic solution. So what if we're all stopped?
Hmm.
They're not good neighbors, but we can't do anything about. But thank you for sharing because I've had that angst, seen it sitting inside me for a long time. This fights, who's gonna have the fights?
You know, I think it's ridiculous. I have to pay eighty dollar a year fee to park in front of my own house.
Yeah.
To the village. So I'm not really understanding how that could just be, you know, i- it does, it doesn't matter and they're saying, oh, but. They had the audacity to tell me, oh, because it's it's overflow parking. Overflow parking at night from where? The prison? Nobody's, the prison isn't open at night. But so that's what I'm trying to understand, like what, you know, what is the reason why somebody cannot be told you can't park on their property?
Well, we put up the.
The library.
The the signs are up.
But see, what I'm trying to tell you is if I don't have that sticker on my car. There will be somebody down here every day putting a ticket on my car. Every day.
One thing that I would like to explore and um. It may just be a waste of time, but it's worth having a conversation. We've been told that the police can't ticket for that purpose in our lot because we're not a village lot. Um, but they can ticket if somebody parks in the um, the fire lanes. And we have called the police when that happens and they've ticketed. But what, what if we came to some sort of arrangement with the village where the police are, could ticket? If we see somebody park there illegally, we'd have to know that they were, we'd have to see it happen. Um, but maybe that's a conversation that we can have. I mean, it's still a matter of enforcement because most of the time our staff are busy, you know, in the building, doing the things that they're supposed to be doing and they're not. Looking at the parking lot, but at least that would give some teeth to. To our sign.
Well, and then with our sign that we, we have a sign that says you will be towed away.
Right.
So do we ever contact the towing company? You know, maybe that's another way to go too.
That's a possibility, but there's a whole set of liability with that that is a can of worms worms all in and of itself.
So the sign means nothing.
The sign means nothing unless we're willing to, and we haven't been thus far. If that's the direction you want us to, you want me to go, I'm happy to go in that direction, but it's going to be fraught with.
Yeah, no, I just was bringing it up because that happened to me last week.
Have we ever sent a letter from our attorney? Is there anything the attorney could say to the restaurant?
Maybe that's the next step because I've sent a letter for myself. But perhaps that's a conversation that we have with the attorney and he drafts a a letter similar to the one he wrote to the surveyors for me.
Yeah, that was a really nice one.
I would also want to note that they're like. They're not really the owners. Like they're the third restaurant. No, what I'm saying is when you get to that restaurant. In that building, that particular one, they're like, original restaurant is kind of the one who owns it and runs the show. So they're kind of not like the owners there. They have owners, I can't remember where, because that restaurant, I mean, it's newer to Austining, but it's not new to Westchester.
No, they're from the the sound side. Um, but the the building is owned by a gentleman whose name I'm not remembering right now. I do have contact with the landlord.
Who are you writing the letter to?
The landlord and the restaurant and the other businesses.
They, that you're wasting your time. They have no input on where a customer parks. They have no intention of directing their customers where to park. And they have no liability or accountability.
True. I will tell you though, that when we were, when I had my daughter at La Graya, there was a parking lot next to La Graya, which doesn't belong to La Graya. And they had problems with parents parking there who were going to La Graya. And they are very, very strict and La Graya themselves are very strict about telling people you can't park in that parking lot. They have signs, they speak to people who do, so they're a good neighbor to that parking lot.
That's the difference.
Yes, I know. It can be done, that's what I'm saying.
Good luck.
If the will is there.
But it would be, and somebody may respond to a letter from a lawyer, even if it's posted in their doorway. You know, or on their door.
So we're actually up to the uh, new business, the first item I asked to be put on because I didn't anticipate the conversation we would have so. That um, I live now move and the payroll and invoices review, uh, for those of us who are here. We're actually looking at these and you can stop in for those of you who are on Zoom right now to the offices to sign off on this stuff. And we're up to the public comment, so we have remaining with us. Uh, Dennis, is there anything you'd like to add or any observations?
No, I just can't believe what you're all up against. But seriously, thank you for all you do. Uh, the library is a haven. It is.
Thank you, Dennis.
And Jonathan March, can I focus on you? Any comments or observations?
Jonathan, you're muted.
You, you, I agree with Dennis. You are, uh, your, your range of uh, of responsibilities. Go from books to digital to uh, HVAC systems. Uh, and everything, it seems like everything in between, uh, and jumping over retaining walls. Uh, I mean, you are uh, covering a wide area. Um, I think the HVAC world is uh, is one now with uh, all the filtration systems going on via for COVID. Is it, is, is probably a big contributor to why the HVAC contractors and consultants are so busy. And the fact that you're looking for a new one, you know, you can take that filtration of the air in uh, in the library. You know, maybe in including that to include that and uh, get some better, you know. You modernize that aspect, but uh, uh, your, your breadth of activity, but uh, I agree with Dennis. It's a, it's a libraries, your library and libraries uh, are a haven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this time I will entertain a motion to leave our meeting and go into exec in a second till we can vote. And we have a Allison and Amanda and all those in favor going to exec in any meeting, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any objections or objections, the being noted carries six zero. Uh, Dennis, thank you. Jonathan, thank you. Kathy, thank you very much. Molly, thank you very much. I don't know if you're staying. But we thank you for your efforts.
Take care.
Molly, could you stay for just a minute?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you. Good night, Dennis. Good night, Jonathan.
Good night, Kathy.
Good night, Kathy.
Okay, so I just wanted to update you on the um, a situation that we discussed briefly after the building committee meeting. Um, you all are aware, we have our building consultant. Um, oh gosh, geez, thank you.
And we have that and all in favor of uh, leaving exec returning to meeting, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Zero, since there are no abstentions or objections, if there's no topic for discussion in our regular meeting, which is about to end. I will proceed to close if, uh, that's a bad phrase, wrong group. I will uh, I will end the meeting if I can get a motion to adjourn in a second and we have that. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. And six zero, no extensions, no objections. Stay safe and stay healthy and thank you for your work.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
All right.